We're recording.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Prue, if you could take the role, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Chair Brian Cafarelli.
Present.
Vice Chair Chris Brogan.
Present.
Marlene Batista, Secretary.
Present.
Jay Gross.
Here.
Pamela Iaccone.
Here.
John Matola.
Here.
And John Nguyen.
Yeah.
All right. And then if we could thank you full house, go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. The flag to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation. In the vision of justice for all. All right. And then I trust everyone received a copy of the February 10th minutes. And I would ask if there are any comments on those? I don't see any, so I'll entertain a motion to accept those. Moved by Pam, seconded by Marlene. Oh, sorry, John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, then it passes. So to get into the heart of the matter, we're going to spend the bulk of this meeting on, as a working session, to kind of discuss the governance issues that we've heard and try and see if we can't mature our thoughts and kind of reduce them and give some direction to Steve, our counsel, to start getting drafting because it's hard to believe, but we've been at this for quite some time. We started last fall and May is going to be here before we know it. And we have to make some decisions and kind of head down one path or another. So I, Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you to briefly kind of introduce the working document that you had talked about, and I think it's a great idea, and thank you for putting it together. And then we will, we'll kind of go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Brian. So what I tried to do with the working document is provide you with some of the questions that you need to be thinking about with regard to the structure of government governance for the town of Fairfield. What are some of the goals? Some of you may recognize some of these goals from strategic planning, but they're not simply focused on strategic planning. I don't want to say they're masters of the obvious, but a lot of the goals that they, they reached and conclusions they reached are pretty steady and well-understood objectives and goals for what a governance document should look like in a community. And, but I added one, last one to that, to try to frame the debate, is we're not talking about a dream governance, governance structure here. We're talking about a real governance structure. We're talking about taking a lot of moving pieces that are in our current charter and trying to put them back together again into a charter for the future. And so the last point I make under your goals are what are realistic, what is a realistic approach for government reform? What are the things that you can really achieve in the context of changing a charter? And the easiest thing to do, obviously, is to keep it the way it is. Make a few changes. We've reorganized the charter a little bit. And you could come to a conclusion that everything is fine the way it is and just make those changes, make a few other adjustments, and then go forward. If you want to look at the structures that are available, you know what the alternatives are. We discussed them last week. We've discussed them before that. The current form, the RTM, Board of Selectmen form. You can also consider mayor council, or as I've said to some people on this commission, you can keep the current titles and make a more unitary executive and more robust legislative body and still call it First Selectman, Select Woman, and RTM. Your neighbor Trumbull has a sole First Selectman who's the sole executive in the community with no Board of Selectmen. So it's certainly doable under the statutes and under practice in the state of Connecticut. You can also consider the approach of a town manager, council manager, former government. And normally, people talk about town manager, but it really is council manager because it's the council that is the governing body that the town manager reports to. And people forget that. So you have to have a fairly mature and well-structured legislative body which serves is the closest thing to a board of directors for a professional town manager to take guidance from and also provide guidance to during the course of their activities. So those are the alternatives that you have. And what I tried to do on the first page was break down some of the questions that you want to take a look at. You know, what do you want for your chief executive, your First Select Woman? What are some of the powers and authorities that you can look at? I listed a chief administrative officer as an option in the event people want to have some more professional management that is accountable to the chief executive, but would have management skills on par with a town manager to be part of a structure. What kind of legislative authority do you want to have for an RTM? And that is, that is an important question regardless of the form of government you have. Because if you move to a town manager, former government, they are the government. They are the elected officials that will really be running the show along with some of the other boards and commissions that we have in, in town. And so the questions you have to deal with there are composition, the number of members of the body, and some organizational questions that you would have as well. Then I get to, on the second page, terms of office. And I don't know why I left this last one. It's kind of picky noon how the special meetings get called of an RTM. But if we, you know, we'll, we'll look at that if we get there. As we go through the document, what I tried to show you is the two, and I've pointed this out before, excuse me, that the two mandatory provisions for any charter are having a legislative body. You have the RTM. You can have a city council, a Board of Aldermen. The Board of Selectmen can be a legislative body. You could break it out in some ways that way. You can have a combination. And then I kind of describe what the current functions are of the, or that you need to consider with regard to our current legislative body, the RTM. Likewise, I did the same thing for the Chief Executive Officer, which is our First Selectman, and ran through the responsibilities that the First Select Woman has in the current charter. On page five, what I wanted to show you is you have, as I said a moment ago, a lot of moving parts in your charter. In a unitary system of government, the executive usually makes appointments, and they could be subject to approval by a legislative body or not. Depends on, on the community. In Fairfield, you have a tradition of, of split authority on, on appointment authority. You have some appointments that come from the First Selectman, Select Woman, and you have some that come from the full Board of Selectmen. And so I tried to do a breakdown of those appointments to give you a sense of what, how they work. The chart also shows you some of the executive functions that some of our boards and commissions serve. So that if you move in the direction of a unitary executive, you have to address the issue. And you may leave it the way it is of some of the executive functions of boards and commissions in Fairfield. So there's an awful lot to consider, awful lot to tackle. If you go all the way, you're going to have a lot of constituencies that you're going to have to address in terms of modifying their authority, eliminating their authority. But I wanted to give you a sense of how it works. And if you look at your charter, they consider these boards and commissions to be part of the executive branch. And in terms of their executive function, because a number of them actually make recommendations, not recommendations, they actually choose department heads, subject to approval by the First Select Woman. Now, I don't know how that works in actual practice and how closely the First Select Woman works with these boards when there's a vacancy in a department. But under the charter, the authority for the hiring really is a commission authority, subject to her approval. So presumably, if they're being smart about it, they're going to work with whoever the chief executive is. But right now, it's a shared executive responsibility that goes to some of the other boards and commissions, many of whom are appointed, some of which are elected. Then I, on page eight, I kept that chart that I passed out earlier showing the number of elected officials you have in Fairfield, which is substantially more than most. Darien is the only community, and Westport's not too far behind either in terms of the number of, of boards and commissions that are elected in your town. Fairfield has a much more robust election process and a very long ballot. And then, again, I think I used this on page nine of the function to show you how the other cities and towns are organized. Not all the cities and towns, but the top 15 or 20 cities and towns in the state, 20 or 25, are organized in the state. So I think you need to think about what we have heard from our professors, from the practitioners who spoke at the last meeting. And I'm going to need some guidance, as the chair indicated, and try to get a sense of what direction this commission wants to take. And I'm happy to answer any questions as you're going through it, but I think that, I think, I'm hoping that when we leave this meeting tonight, that I'll have a sense of where you want to go and may be able to start drafting something that you'll be able to look at if you, if we reach a consensus this evening on direction. So that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you very much. And so I think what we really need to do then as a commission tonight is focus on addressing and answering some of these questions on page one, which are, you know, kind of fundamental. But I, before we kind of go through into the nitty-gritty of it, I would open it up and like to hear on kind of general thoughts on how you all think that this should be approached tonight. But one way or another, we need to come up with, start making some decisions as a group and, you know, giving some guidance as to where we want to, you know, what path we want to head down and where we want to wind up in May. You know, the, the full gamut of, you know what, we've heard a lot of input from, you know, the community and constituencies and experts, and we decided we don't want to change a thing to let's just scrap it all and, you know, start rewriting it tonight. But there might be somewhere in between that we land. But I would open it up as a vice chair. Chris, if you wanted to say anything, and then to the rest of the commission.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. I don't have much to say other than, yeah, I, I think the first question is sort of, you know, what, as you said, do we want to change? And if so, which way? It's, if there's anything I've learned on this process from all that Steve's shown us is that there's 169 downs or whatever in Connecticut, and there's 169 ways of having government. And they all, I guess, work in their own way, too. So sort of interesting. So, but I, I guess, yeah, to me, the first question, I guess, yeah, is but there are attributes of each of the three major types. And I guess, to me, that's the most important question is, do we want to switch into something else? And if so, which one? And then from there, you start working from the general down to some very specific and perhaps problematic issues. And maybe when you get down there, you go, well, is this too hard or whatever? But that's sort of the approach I was thinking of.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts? Or John Matola? And then John Nguyen?
Um, I actually like wrote notes.
Oh, good. That's good.
If you bear with me for a couple of minutes, just kind of give you my thoughts.
Of course.
What, what I tried to do was kind of, based on what we've heard and understanding on the charter, just kind of look at where I think we can make some improvements with what we have. And I, I guess, I, I haven't heard an overriding sense that we need to make significant change in, in our government. But I do agree that we can improve some of the way we govern and, and streamline our government and, and try to, to the best we can guarantee professionalism and experience with, with respect to the way that we govern. And I, I think as a body that we really need to be cognizant about our town's culture. We've heard, we've heard that said a few times during the presentations over the last couple of months. We are used to a particular way of governance in Fairfield that I think for the most part works. And, and one of the, the comments that was made at our last meeting is that, I think it was from the First Selectman of Branford, maybe, I may be confusing this, but he said when we do charter revision, we cannot confuse the population too much. Because I think if you have so much change, we're doomed to failure. So with, with that said, let me just, here's my thoughts on, on everything. I, I do believe that we need an elected chief official called a First Selectman, First Select Woman, Mayor. I, I do think it's important to have one person who's accountable to the people, who is, who has a vision of what he or she wants to do for the town of Fairfield, and what he or she wants to achieve. So I think that's important. I'm not, I'm not in favor of a town manager system or a small town council, town manager type system. I, I, I just think for Fairfield, it's not the right approach. And, and I'm very hesitant to push for a new form of government that consolidates power in fewer people. I, I think one of the beauties of Fairfield is that we have a real good system of checks and balances. And that there's a power share structure that I think we have right now, but that I do think needs some improvement. I do, however, agree that it's important that we have some professionalism, expertise in how our town government is, is managed to help our chief elected official achieve the goals that he or she wants to achieve. And I don't think the two are mutually exclusive. I think you can have both. And with, with that said, I, I think one of the things we should, we should focus on is is the appointments to certain positions. And I do think that when we have appointments, that those appointments should be made for, for a term of a certain amount of years that we can talk about. Because I think if you have that, you're more apt to get professionals who may want to do the particular job. And, and what I want to steer away from is, is whoever the First Select Person is is making appointments for political purposes. I, I, I'm not saying we actually have that today, but I do think it would be a better government if, for positions like, if we have a CAO that we discussed about the last time, Finance Director, Human Resources Director, Public Facilities Director, that those, those types of positions should be appointed positions, we can have appointed by whoever the First Select Person is, and maybe some approval by a legislative body, but that those appointments are for a term. They don't serve at the pleasure of whoever the First Select Person is. So I, I think, and that, and we have the chart from Steve's document today. I think that's kind of what we, we can focus on that also. So that's some thoughts with respect to whoever the First Select Person position. I, I would consider looking at whether or not we need a Board of Selectmen anymore. I'm open-minded with respect to that. So I, I think we can look at that. I do think we need a legislative body. Obviously, we have to have one under the, the state law. But I am open-minded about looking at the, the size of the RTM. But I do feel it's very, very important that we have representation from distinct districts. Fairfield is a town that has distinct neighborhoods. They have distinct features, our neighborhoods. So I think you have to have representation from particular districts. I'm not in favor of this at-large concept. I, I quite frankly, don't understand the concept, to be honest with you. I don't think it would work well for Fairfield. And as I've kind of alluded to earlier, I'm not in favor of a, a small legislative town body of eight or nine people. I, I just don't think that'll work for Fairfield. With that said, I do think our legislative body needs a heck of a lot more support than what they're getting right now. And one of those things that they need is, I, I, and this is going to get into another topic in a minute. I, I think, I think we need to have an assistant town attorney. Our charter calls for it. We haven't had one in a few years. We only have a town attorney. And one person can't do the job by himself. I don't think an attorney has gone to an RTM meeting with the town attorney. I'm not being critical of anyone. This isn't the current town attorney. I'm not being critical of him. This has gone on for the last few years, past administrations. You know, I don't, I don't think we've had an assistant town attorney attend an RTM meeting on a regular basis in a long time. The one time I was on the RTM, so over years ago, I believe, we had an attorney assigned there. So my point is, with respect to the legislative body, I think they need more help and support so they can be effective. And I think one of the ways we can do that is to have an attorney, an assistant town attorney assigned and who attends RTM meetings on a regular basis. The other thing I think we have to keep in mind, if we don't have a Board of Selectmen anymore, then some of those duties that the Board of Selectmen currently have may have to be done by our legislative body. So we have to balance that if, if that's the direction where we want to go. And so, so I, so I think that's important. I, I think the Board of Finance works well. You can call me biased on that, and I, I just do. I don't think we've heard any indication from the public that that system needs to be changed. I think if we do keep a Board of Selectmen, that the budget process with respect to the Board of Selectmen can be cut out. I think that'll make it more efficient. The Board of Selectmen recommends a budget, but it's the Board of Finance that really votes on it and sends it on to the RTM. That doesn't mean that the Board of Selectmen members can't be included in the process. They can attend our Board of Finance meetings during the budget process and ask whatever questions they want. I do feel it's also important, we talked about this a couple of, a few meetings ago, that we do need a capital budget process. I think there was some great language from, I think it was Greenwich, if I recall, that has that language that we should look at. On the town commissions, I'm, I'm really kind of up in the air with respect to that. So we, we can look at that. And I knew that, I know there was some mention about our zoning officials, should they be appointed as, as opposed to being elected? And I'm not quite sure. I understand the benefits of doing it that way. And maybe we can talk about that a little bit. Now, with respect to the other topic is, and I'm not sure how to go about doing this, because I don't think our commission is really capable of really studying this to make a decision. I, I personally feel that Fairfield should look at having a town attorney office, which would be comprised of maybe two full-time attorneys who work for the town of Fairfield. Other municipalities have that system. Greenwich has it. Bridgeport has it. Doesn't matter who the First Selectman is. I think Norwalk has part of that type of system. I just, I just think it's something to, to look at. I think whether it's fair or not, that there's perception that whoever the town attorney is, that person is, is the First Select Person's attorney, not the town attorney. And I just, I just think it's time for Fairfield to, to look at that. And, you know, Steve, I don't know how if we want to go in that direction, if we just have something in the charter that says, you know, the RTM or the legislative body, whoever that may be, looks at that issue and it's, and, and it stays the same until something happens. Like, I assume a town attorney's office can be established through an ordinance. But that would take some study. It would, you'd have to look at money, finances. Is it, is it financing feasible? All of those types of things that we're just not capable of doing. But I think it's important that maybe we have something in our charter where the legislative body needs, needs to look at something like that. And, and I, and finally, I do think it's, I know Ms. Iaccone shares this pet peeve with me. We need to look at the minority representation on the Board of Finance and the Board of Education because it's simply, they're so inconsistent with each other. You, you, the minority representation on the Board of Finance can be six-three. That's how it can shake out. But for whatever reason, the Board of Education, it's five-four all the time. And it, in my opinion, it, it takes choice away from our voters during the election process. And I think that happened when it was a quirk, when they did charter revision a few years ago, when they changed the Board of Ed terms from six years to four years. The way they did it created this issue and problem, and I think that needs to be addressed. So sorry I was long-winded, but those are my thoughts. Thanks.
No, it was very helpful. And it certainly helps to guide us. And so I took some notes.
And I'm just, I just, I really do appreciate the idea that we need some expertise and professionalism in how we govern our town. And, and I know some members have said that. And I know some members, without speaking for some people, may think the best way to do that is through a town manager. I, I get that. But I, I just don't think that'll work in Fairfield. But I do think we can address that concern in, by doing charter revision. And I think it's something that the citizens would, would, would agree with, and it would have a good possibility of passing. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. John Nguyen had some comments?
Certainly. I'll try and go through it quickly. I also jotted some thoughts down. And I think a lot of things that John just articulated, I can agree with, although there's some of them that I don't. One of the key things is that the, the learnings that we, we have from the strategic plan work that was done, all the work around town supplemented by the Model City Charter information, and then the, the additional great information that Steve has pulled together for us, including the panels we heard, kind of has guided a lot of what I'll articulate right now about the structure. But I think we probably need bigger change than what John is mentioning, because the Model City Charter work from the National Civic League indicates that after studying this topic for 100 years, their recommended form of governance is structured to deal with incompetence, inefficiency, patronage, and corruption in local municipal government. And if those aren't, is that, that's not a definition of the challenges the town is experiencing the results of right now and will for many years, I, I don't know what bigger call for change there could be. The elements that I, that I agree with, with John on, a mayor or senior elected, key elected official, a key component of this, a legislative function, it's required. I think a town manager is, is, is really needed. And a Board of Finance is needed as well. So I gave some thought to each one of these different components of a possible governance structure that I jotted down. So let me quickly run through that, and then we can figure out where we go from there. But the mayor or First Select Person, let's not get caught up in the nomenclature. As the key elected official, they would be integral to setting a long-term direction and the marketing message for the town, what we as a town and community want to be. They ensure the long-term aspirations and desires of the entire town are kept in the focus. And they participate with the legislative function, whether it be town council or RTM, in administration and execution of that legislative affairs. And the question of whether they vote with the council or they are only a tiebreaker is, is a bigger discussion, but we can have that. The legislative function of town council or RTM certainly is the chief legislative function. They collaborate with that senior elected official on the long-term direction that the town manager, that I'll describe in a second, would then implement. They address, the town council addresses the other legislative and ordinance work. They have ultimate budget approval. They have ultimate budget approval responsibilities. There is representation by district supplemented by at-large representation. A smaller component of positions on the council legislative function would be at-large membership. It would be more streamlined than the existing legislative function, i.e. smaller and more efficient and more effective. Uh, and they would have more concentrated experience by having a smaller population of representation on it. You would get the people that are most knowledgeable and experienced to be participating in that. So that would be the council. The town manager would be the chief operating function of the town. They would be hired by the council in collaboration with the senior elected official or the mayor. They provide a level of, of non-political, objective leadership and management to the town. Absolutely critically important based upon what we heard and what we're experiencing as a town. They would need to be credentialed and experienced. They would need to have a contract. They would help ensure the long-term consistency in policies and direction for the town. So we wouldn't get pulled willy-nilly by political objectives, but would give us a, a uniform, steady approach. And they're the key operating executive for the town. Um, the, the, the other, so we, we've talked about the council, the town manager, the mayor. The board of finance would collaborate with the town manager on fiscal oversight, risk management. They would have budget review and approval before the town council or the legislative function votes and then other activities. Capital budgeting, I certainly can see being a component of it. Um, the other thing I, I forgot to mention is the, the mayor or senior elected official is the key ceremonial figurehead for the town. They are the face of the town. Uh, they are elected by the people. They're involved in ceremonial types of activities. So that was my meanderings before I had the benefit of looking at Steve's questions. But I think a lot of what I described, we can answer Steve's questions by talking about this in a little bit further detail. And John, I think you'll see some of the things I mentioned. I agree with what your thoughts, some of them I disagree with. You know, whether you think we need that or not, and we can have a really good, probably lengthy debate on many of those topics. Happy to try and answer any questions.
Okay. Um, does anyone else have any, um, thoughts? Jay Groves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, okay. So first of all, uh, my opinion is really guided mostly, uh, by what I've heard from the town and what I've heard from experts. So, um, you know, fortunately, I had the experience to sit in all the strategic planning workshops. So I saw firsthand the emotion, um, that was in, uh, most of the people, uh, that attended those workshops in terms of, uh, I apologize for the noise. The printer is in my office and, uh, apparently my daughter's doing her homework. That's, um, so-
She'd be happy about that.
Yeah, I should, I am, I am very. Um, so my point was, I don't have any doubts that at the time, there was very strong direction from the people that attended those workshops in terms of wanting significant change in our government. Uh, the emotion, uh, represented by the community, based upon everything that was going on at the time, um, you know, was reflected in their desire to have significant change. So I really wanna communicate that to everybody. Um, there should be no doubt that there was significant desire for significant change. What I would like, and, and hopefully people in the town are watching this, what I would like to, uh, do is to hear from the town again so that we can all get guided by that emotion and, and the, uh, and the commitment because it's, it's, they've gotta vote for this. Uh, whatever change they want, they've gotta vote for. So I would really like to be guided by that again. Um, so having said that, uh, I'd also like to go through the guidance we got from the experts. Uh, going back to, uh, look at some of the comments that were made, uh, by the panels, uh, that Attorney Megna put together. I'm, I'm just gonna go through this pretty quickly. Um, Joe DeLong, you know, and I'm just gonna go through the things I wrote down. In terms of town manager, town council, his comment that I wrote down was professional and certification. Um, some of the key criteria that they looked at was, uh, as complex issues, uh, increase, uh, towns drive to a CEO model. That in general, the electorate of today, uh, it's not appropriate for the electorate of today to be dealing with a lot of these issues, uh, because the complexity drives the need for subject matter experts. So it's just not appropriate to have the general electorate, uh, responsible for a lot of these executive functions and operations. Uh, the town manager is less partisan. It is, uh, provides for greater accountability, and that was from Professor Gary Rose. Uh, Dr. Alberta also recommended the CEO model, uh, in which, uh, what I wrote down is it increases service levels, increases accountability, increases responsiveness to the public, decreases partisan, partisanship, uh, is, uh, more able to deal with complex issues and, uh, generates less corruption. Uh, Dan Rosenthal, uh, commented that they moved to the town manager due to the complexity of the issues that they faced. Um, they also liked a separate, uh, board of finance. Uh, Ellen Zupo, uh, commented about the da- the town manager providing, uh, the fact that the town manager is not involved as a politician in town operations at all, uh, and therefore increases the stability because the town manager can in fact, uh, implement things over numbers of, uh, over various types of administrations. Scott Shadley mentioned that, uh, the town manager enables the running of the town to be apolitical and that it increases accountability. Uh, Dan Salino mentioned that the complexity, uh, of, uh, today's operations drives the needs for a town manager. So you can see where I'm going with this. Um, I, I'm a big supporter of the town manager concept, uh, for a lot of the reasons that, uh, were presented to us by the panel. And, uh, based upon, you know, my experience with thousands of town residents in those workshops, a- at this point in time, I, I'm telling you, I think they are ready for significant change and they're calling for significant change. So I am in favor of the following. Um, I am in favor of a town council, town manager, uh, structure. Uh, town manager, town council, town manager, mayor structure, structure. Because the town manager, we have a trained, degreed professional to deal with the complex issues, uh, of today. And, and I know we don't like to say this, but Fairfield is a small city today. It is. And the logic of, uh, trying to manage a small city in the same structure that you would manage a small town, just, it just doesn't seem logical that you could do that. Um, and as the numbers of people go up, the number of issues and complexity goes up. So I don't see the complexity going down. I only see the complexity going up for the need, uh, requiring, uh, increased need of training and skills in the professionals that manage the town. The second reason why I'm in favor of that structure is that it increases accountability due to the smaller size of government. So, uh, it, it, it's unfortunate that, um, there, there really are so many executive responsibilities distributed throughout the town that it is difficult to understand, uh, for the average person, who actually is in charge for any one issue at, at any point in time. And one of the benefits of the town council is there is more of a one-stop shopping approach for accountability and for residents to be able to appeal to their government. Um, and, uh, and the last thing is obviously reduced, uh, partisanship. Think that's, that's a big plus to that structure. Having said that, I am in favor of a district alignment for the members of the town council. Uh, I agree with John that, uh, part of the uniqueness of Fairfield is the fact that we've got all these different neighborhoods, that culture and character ought to be preserved. And the way you can do that is through a district level structure in terms of how the town council members are elected. Um, you know, in terms of the number, I mean, we can debate that, but, uh, um, it, it, I don't think it needs, I think the need, the number needs to be south of twenty. Uh, let's just leave it at that. Um, and I also like, uh, having a board of finance that is a separate organization. I think that that, uh, uh, structure appeals to, uh, the town in the sense that it also affords us some level of continuity in terms of the structure today with what we might be able to implement in the future. However, I do think, uh, we could probably do with, uh, fewer members, uh, on the board. Um, so, so that's about it. Those are my thoughts. And, uh, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, anyone else have any comments? Pam.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, Pam Aikono. Um, I actually agree with a lot of, um, what Mr. Matola was saying. Um, and, um, I, I feel very strongly that the RTM is just too large. It, it doesn't function the way that, um, it was intended in its original historic formation. Um, it's essentially now broken down into two distinct caucuses, um, where, you know, people are just aligned around leaders and we're not having the robust conversations that we used to have, um, back in the day. And I don't know if that's just a product of where society has gone today or what, but I think that we have a lot of room for improvement there. And, um, you know, I, I share the sentiment that everyone else has here that if we make that body smaller, um, it'll put everybody, it, it'll put the public more in tune with the, the representatives that are representing them. Um, I don't think that people really know what the RTM is. Um, I don't think that most of them know who their RTM representative is. Um, and I think that if there are less of, um, them, that there will be, believe it or not, um, more accountability, uh, more approachability and, um, uh, a closeness, for lack of a better way to say it. Um, I don't see the need for a board of selectmen anymore. I, I think that those are roles that can, um, uh, as, you know, Mr. Matola alluded to, be absorbed by a stronger legislative body. To me, these are all incentives to have, uh, an, an, an executive, and to me, that's a first select person or a mayor, and a town council slash RTM, um, that's empowered to do more things. If you think about it, our RTM really doesn't do a whole lot of, of, of what they really have the potential to do. And if you were to shrink that down and eliminate the board of selectmen and have a, a first select person and have a smaller council, I think I'm the only one in favor of an out-large, but I know that's not the culture of Fairfield and I, I would keep the district system even though, you know, my personal preference would be at, at-large, but I don't wanna mess with that. I respect the culture of it. Um, I, I think that on for appointments, for example, um, you know, the, the first select person can make an appointment and the, then the town council can have, um, you know, the right to reject that person. And you have a, a, a closer connection than between executive and legislature. And I think there's just this disconnect there as we move through all these different processes. So I, I just think there's ways to build, build a stronger government for the people through a restructuring in that regard. Um, I do feel very strongly that we need a board of finance. I think you, we heard from some other towns even that said they were looking to add boards of finances or they missed that component of a board of finance. Um, I agree with Jay. I, do it, does it need to be nine people? I don't know. It's a six-year term. That's a long time. We, it, it's difficult to get people to commit for that long of a time. Um, you know, are we better off with going for seven? Uh, we do have people that resign in the middle of the term and, um, you know, that's something that maybe we could talk about. I'm not married to going smaller. I, you know, um, I, I can keep it nine, but I do think we need to keep it. Um, I am not in favor of a town manager. I just, maybe that's just too much of the Yankee in me. I, I just don't see it. Um, I, I understand that those structures work well outside of New England and they started with that structure. Maybe there's just more of them in other parts of the country, um, where they're trained and certified and have degrees. But I personally don't see it here. I, I just don't. Um, I think that the level of, of executive that we are looking for is in a salary range north of $200,000. And what we have in Connecticut, based on feedback of what we heard, are managers who are employed at a salary level of 120 to 150,000 dollars. I don't think that's really where we're looking. We're looking for strategic, I think. And I don't think you're gonna get that from what I've seen around the state. And, and that's no disrespect to anybody that has a, has a town manager. It's just not the level of where I think that we really wanna take that. And, and I don't see it as, um, providing less corruption and more professionalism. I, I mean, you can do that through, uh, uh, mi- holding your elected officials accountable. That's just my opinion. Um, so I'd like to explore eliminating the board of selectmen, having a smaller RTM. I personally would love to move to the, the titles of mayor, council. Um, however, I do think that that's going to, um, be difficult for people to process. And I don't think it'll pass. It'll scare people off. They, they're afraid of, um, again, to Jay's point, we are a small city. We're all fighting it left, right, and center, but we are. Um, and the reason why I wanna change the vernacular is no one knows what it is. My son's friend asked me the other day, "Ms. Aikono, what is it you do? What, what, what elected position?" I am a member of the RTM. But then I have to go on to explain that that's like a town council, the town's legislative body, I, all the time. However, I think if we do move to a, a council, people are, that's immediately gonna shut people down and I don't wanna see that happen. Um, so I'm, you know, fine leaving it with for select person slash, you know, RTM, but I do wanna make it smaller. And, um, regarding the public, I, I understand and respect everything that the Strategic Planning Committee went through and the, and the report that they put together. But the bottom line is, no one has gotten on at public comment during all of these sessions, asking for a town manager. I do think the public wants to change. I hear that as an RTM member. They don't know who to go to. The structure is very confusing for them. You, who do I go to? I, I, you know, I have a complaint about the Marina, you know. The first select woman's office deals with a lot of stuff that could probably could be farmed out in other places if people really knew who to go to. So I, I, I do agree that people don't know who handles what because it's so large. But I, I just, um, you know, I, 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 I think where we need to go is, is, is looking at, you know, mayor, council, RTM, first select person, and shrink that down.
Okay. Um, that's helpful. Um, do we have any, well, I mean, so you're the kind of the odd person out, Marlene. I don't wanna skip over you, but you don't feel compelled that you have to say anything because we can kinda go into, uh, you know, what, I think there are some threshold questions that we can kinda answer yes or no. So we can head there or we can hear your thoughts. It's up to you. It's up to you.
A, a lot of my thoughts are exactly what Pam has expressed, and I feel very strongly too about the RTM. It needs to be smaller. And I think, and Pam and I have actually spoken about this. It, it needs to be, it will be held more accountable. If it is smaller, people will have a better sense of how they can help them. So I'm very much in favor of a smaller RTM. Don't, don't think that we need the board of selectmen, or it needs to definitely be restructured as to what it is now. I, I think it's a little bit complicated. Absolutely agree that we need a board of finance. Numbers, I'm, I'm not sure on if it needs to be smaller or not, but the six-year term is, could be a definite issue. But I, I happen to think we have a very, and Mr. Matola, this is, you know, homage to you as well. I think we have a very strong board of finance, so.
Well, good. I think-
Sort of my thoughts.
No, it's very helpful, and I think we are-
Just one more point, one more point on the RTM. I, I've also, since I've been paying a lot of attention to this over the last several years, I do agree that, I, I just don't think that they're looking at and sort of making the decisions on some of the important things that they can be because it's, it's very distracted right now between, I feel like it's become very political. I'm watching a lot of the RTM meetings, and it is the same people all the time talking, the same small group of people. And at the end of the meeting, I really don't know what was accomplished. That's going to, that's my honest opinion there. But I think that there's some, there's a lot of people who are very interested in helping and wanting to do their thing, but I think we've, it, it's just gotten too political at this point, and it's not really benefiting the town.
Okay, I think John had a follow-up. John, win.
Yes, thank you. And, and I think there's probably a lot more that I agree with, with Pam and Jay and Marlene and John have all, and Chris have all expressed, but the one question I still wrestle with, and I brought this up at a prior meeting when we had the panelists here, and I continue to struggle with it now. Absent a town manager in, in a structure that would have a council, mayor, how do you have the competency, capability, skilled, depth of experience person? Where, where is that role in that structure? And if it, if it's going to exist organically, why don't we have it now? Why do we have the problems we've had over the past three or four years that are going to continue for the next 15 or 20 years with tens of millions of dollars?
I see you, John.
We literally lose that natural, organic institution that is going to magically reappear without that credentialed, management-skilled person.
John Matola, did you, your hand kind of shot up there.
John, I think I can answer your question a couple of ways. One is, let, let's look at history.
John, speak, speak up a tiny bit, just-
I'm sorry, just look at our history, and, and, and this is why I think we need in the charter to establish certain positions that are, that have a term of service. We, a few years ago under the prior administration, we had a first selectman whose chief of staff was cut out by the RTM for purely political purposes. And we, we got to get away from that kind of BS. It's just not the way to run government. And so, I, I think to get that, that professionalism that you want and I want, we all want, is to look at those positions. I think in our, we could establish a charter position of CAO for the town of Fairfield. And we can talk about, that person still reports to the first select person, but that individual has a term of service. Five years, six years, we can talk about that. And, and doesn't just serve at the pleasure of whoever the first select person is, is subject to reappointment at a later date if that person's doing a good job. I, I think, I think those are the things that we can look at to, to, to ensure the best we can, that type of professionalism. And as I said earlier, I don't think having a chief elected official who's in charge of the town and having those types of positions are mutually exclusive. I think you can have both of them. You know, we can talk about our, and I'm not being critical of anyone in any position right now, I want to make that clear. We could talk about having a finance director appointed to a term. That type of position, human resources director, those types of positions, so that they're, they're here for a number of years, understand the operations of the town, and help whoever is the first, the elected first select person, or whatever you want to call it, achieve his or her goals. It, it happens in other municipalities. So I, I think we can achieve what you want to achieve and, 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 and keep kind of the structure that we have. My, my fear really is if, if, I don't think Fairfield's going to vote for a town manager and a charter revision. I just think that's going to be very difficult. And maybe it's just my personal feeling, but I've lived here for like 50 years, and I, I just don't think Fairfield's going to want to go in that direction. But I do agree with, with you about, we want to ensure to the best of our ability that we're having people who know what they're doing running those important positions. So, again, those are, those are kind of my thoughts.
Got a lot of hands here. Attorney Medneck had his hand up, so I think maybe he's got, and then Chris Brogan.
Are you muted?
I have a technical question based on Commissioner Matola's last comment. Is Jim Baldwin, I see Jim Baldwin's name there, is Jim available to answer a question?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So, one of the concepts that Commissioner Matola was talking about was the concept of a term for key departments. We can name the departments, delineate them in the charter, including a COO or CAO, whatever you want to call a professional administrator, and there is a model for that. We can talk about it. I don't want to get involved in the debate, but there is a model that we can talk about. How many of our department heads currently are members of collective bargaining units, Jim? Are any of them currently members of collective bargaining units?
Yes, I would say that the large majority of them are, but some of the key positions are not. Like the chief financial officer, the chief administrative officer certainly are not. And interestingly enough, I shared this with you earlier, there are some who are members of collective bargaining agreements, but nevertheless by statute actually must be appointed and served by term and are not protected by collective bargaining agreements. But-
Their term is not, they, they have other protections, but their job, their term is not protected, but their other benefits, they benefit from the collective bargaining agreement. Yeah, but is that something we'd have to look at in terms of moving toward John's model? And it is a model that works. It's a model that exists in a lot of communities around the state. But I just wanted to ask, I wanted to just acquaint the commission with the notion that we have to think about that.
Yeah, and I, and I, I had a big note about how many of these are in collective bargaining units, which, which is, which is a good thing in a lot of ways because you ensure that professionalism by virtue of the fact that they're going to do their job to the best of their ability in most situations. Sometimes you obviously have deviations of that. And if you, if you have someone who's not doing the job, they can be terminated through a process. But you have someone who's a professional, who's doing his or her job and doing it for the benefit of the town and doesn't have to worry about, gee, if so-and-so loses an election, I'm going to be out of a job. And I think, I think with those upper echelon positions like CAO, finance director, I think human resources is one of them, and public facilities, I, I, I think we can look at, at, at those positions to see if we can, to the best of our ability, ensure that we're getting those professional people in those positions and by doing, and doing that by virtue of having, having them serve for a term. So, I know I'm repeating myself, but I think we all kind of want to get to the same place, but we have different ways of getting there.
Yep. Okay. Jay, did you want to weigh in again before we kind of begin to materialize some of this?
I just, I just want to, so I just want to make sure I understand, John Matola, where you're coming from. Same thing with you, Pam. Is it the, the word, the title, town manager, that you think people are going to have a problem with? Because the role and responsibility of having a credentialed individual within a position titled chief administrative officer, I, I think that title is actually more confusing to people than town manager. I, I seem to feel that we're all in agreement that we need to increase the professionalism credentials of the higher echelon individuals running our town. I, I, I'm sensing-
Well, no, no, I, I, I think you're speaking for yourself and maybe for some other people. I mean, I haven't-
All right, so let me just ask the question. Is it the title itself that you think people aren't going to accept? Or is it the structure? So if we had a chief administrative officer, but they were reporting into the legislative body, is that acceptable? So I'm just confused as to, okay, Pam?
And maybe it's a bias on my part, Jay. I mean, I grew up in a town that originally had a town manager. They ditched it and moved to a, a selectman. And I just, it, it, it's not the title. It, it's not, it's, 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 I, I do agree that, yes, we need to make sure that we're, and to John's point, hiring people for their, their qualifications and what they can do for the town and not political cronyism, for lack of a better word. And I'm not saying that anybody's done that, and different things have been done with different administrations. And just as an, as an example, because I think there is something here that touches upon it, and, and Mr. Matola respectively, we did not cut the chief of staff for purely political reasons. We cut that position, and this is a good thing to bring up. We reduced that position from full-time to part-time because the legislative body did not feel that the person in that role was doing a full-time job. So how, how do you correct that through charter reform? Can that be corrected through charter reform? Is that something that people codify in a, in a charter? I, I don't honestly know the answer to that, but that's what happened in that situation. And how do you make sure that you are structured in such a way to, to hire the right people for the job? Do you codify that in, in the charter? I would, I, I would think that you would have professional job descriptions that you're hiring to, and, you know, Steve knows more about that than me, but I, I just, I, I don't think that, 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 I think if you're doing the right hiring and you're putting the right people in the position, and I understand your concern, you're thinking we didn't have the right people in the positions and that's why we went down these rabbit holes, and if we had just hired somebody who had a degree in it, this wouldn't have happened. I, I don't necessarily know that that is so. That's my two cents. John Matola, I don't know if you have more you want to add to that.
I think, well, I, I just, you know, I don't mean to cut anyone off. I think that sometimes we are beginning to get into a little bit of the minutia, and these things are all going to be very important once we make some critical decisions. So I don't, I don't want to stop this, but I do think it would be helpful, I mean, we are hearing a lot of the same things, there's a couple of deviations, but I think it would be helpful if we just kind of did a quick straw poll of the fundamental questions of what's been brought up and where we are in terms of what we feel, you know, what the direction we want to head. And so I, I don't want to cut anyone off. I see, Chris, you have your hand raised up, so if you want to say something, but I do want to kind of-
Yeah, I just didn't have a chance yet to express my view first.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Sure, please, thank you.
I'll be quick. I think, you know, I think the town government we have has served us very well. You know, there's bumps along the way, there's bumps along the way in every government. The question is what's going to take us into the future. I, I found it instructive that, you know, all the other towns with the exception of one have moved off to something else or have something else in our range, and I think we are a small city. I think the people talked about it, especially the people who are working in government are as impressed, so they did talk about the things about complexity, consistency over time, the ability to plan long-term, and there's a lot of big challenges facing all the towns in Connecticut, and I think all those aspects are important. The current form of government, you know, it grew out of the town meeting to an RTM. It, it's, you know, I think it's hard to change that into a town council. I think if we want to have a smaller RTM or whatever, you know, and our, the RTM right now can regulate its size, and if it wants to change its size, fine, it's done it before. But to try and say we have an RTM, but we're going to make it real small and make it like a council, it's not. I think an RTM is good at doing what a town meeting did, which is dealing with big issues from time to time. They're not in there really for day-to-day management of the town or oversight. And I think that's why if we have an RTM, it's important to have a board of selectmen because they do act as a filtering mechanism. They have the power to question the, the first selectman, which maybe is important when you have a little bit of a distant legislature. So, I think it's a long way of saying, if we were going to keep the current structure, you can tweak things like who votes, you know, who's involved in the budget, things like that. But I'm not sure you can do much structurally if you're going to have a first select person in a RTM. I kind of favor what, if I were to start from scratch, I'd favor a town manager concept. I think that's, I think we're in the sweet spot for that. It was interesting, the first selectman of Newtown, Newtown was talking about wishing he could switch to one, although he's a third generation, I think he said first selectman. So it does seem to be, we'd be in a good spot. I think we benefit from it. I think there's some questions, I know Steve had raised earlier, about the ability to kind of go directly into that, which may affect the ability to actually get it accepted by the town. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a political guy really in town, so it's hard for me to say what people will go for. I just talk to neighbors and all that, they, honestly, they don't pay that much attention to this. I do think the current titles we have are very confusing, and it was interesting, there's a New York Times article where our first selectwoman gave a quote, they didn't know what to call her. They put in the chief executive officer for Fairfield. They wouldn't, I don't know why, they wouldn't say first selectman, but they figured nobody would understand it. So it's sort of interesting, but I, so I guess so, I would like, I like the idea of professional manager. My real question is whether that's going to be feasible for us to do here and get accepted by the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's kind of one of the, the like fundamental questions we all have to ask when, and I think Steve hit it on the head in this framework where he said, you know, what's a realistic approach for this government reform? Because, you know, the process is we've got the board of selectmen have to vote on this, and then, you know, obviously the whole town, you know, has to vote on it and weigh in and, and be, you know, feel comfortable with it. So the, the, the level of change that we're going to- You're muted. Am I back?
Yes, now you are.
Okay. So I think we've, we've heard a lot of kind of similar thoughts, and there's obviously some differences, so, but again, kind of the basic questions here is, you know, do we keep a chief elected official that, that, you know, that has the functions that normally are associated with it? Or are, you know, but you know, as John Matola kind of put it more eloquently, I forget exactly what you said, but, you know, something, the one person accountable to the, to the people who, who, you know, who runs- the one person accountable to the, to the people who, who, you know, who runs the town. And, um, or do we want to go down a path of having a more ceremonial seat each town, town, um, first selectman or mayor? So I guess that is the, the question here that we need to approach before we start the deliberations on that. And then similar question for the board of selectmen, similar for the RTM and the size and similar for the board of finance. So I think if we kind of see where we all are on that, um, then we can, we can begin to move forward or have further discussions about them. Does that sound like a, an okay idea? So, um, keeping a town first selectman and kind of tweaking it there with some of the suggestions that we've heard in terms of maybe specific, you know, outlining more details in terms of specific positions, you know, however that may look, but, um, versus a town manager. So who is in favor of that? I am. So we have three. Okay. And then it's moving to a town manager. That is four. Okay. What about the board of selectmen? Do we think we need to keep them or they need to go? Stay? All of us in favor of keeping the board of selectmen as it is?
So just keeping a board of if, if obviously a town manager, you wouldn't have a board of selectmen. So you're saying if we kept the certain, if kept the current system, do we want to keep a board of selectmen?
I think that that's probably what I'm asking. Yes.
I, I, I would say it's worth looking into eliminating, but I'm, but I'm not there yet because it depends on what size our legislative body is.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's probably best to table, but you know, based on our prior, prior results. Um, and then does anyone not want to consider the size of the legislative body, the RTM? It sounds like everyone is in favor of looking at making that somewhat smaller. Does anyone not, Chris?
If we're keeping the current structure.
Well, there would still be a, a legislative body with their town manager, right?
We have to debate the size of the body in their any case.
Yeah.
To, to my personally in a mayor council or council of town manager, it's a significantly smaller council. Like in the range of nine to 12 or something. An RTM to me by definition is a large body. You know, whether it should be 30, 40, 20, 50, I don't know. I, and I, and I'd say said before, the RTM currently has the power to change that. And maybe that's, you know, if they want to change it, change it. So I, I'm not strongly saying do it if everybody wants to do it. I'll entertain the discussion.
All right, John Matola and then Jay Gross.
So I was just, so, so when our, our charter now says that the RTM can't be any higher than, I think 56 people. Is that what it says?
Yep.
So, and I, I don't know where I, I don't want people who are listening to say, this is my position on it. I'm still a little, I, I still think we need significant representation. We're a town of 61,000 people, but I would be looking at agree able to look at the size. Um, so we, we could say in our charter that the RTM or whatever legislative body can be no more than, you know, 25 people or 30 people. We have that authority, right Steve, to do that?
Well, most charters, you're unusual in Fairfield because you have an up to number. In most communities, they actually set the number of their legislative bodies. For the most part.
Permanently. That's it.
Permanently locked in. Well, you can change it whenever you want to change it through charter revision, but it would be locked in your charter. Can I just point out to you that in the town manager form of government, if you look in Connecticut, the largest council is 11. So that's a very substantial change from what you have currently. Uh, because they serve more like boards of directors. You don't want to have a, you want to have a 30 member board of directors or 25 member board of directors in the town. Uh, so the, the model in Connecticut for town manager towns would be a nine member. I think one town has 11 members. Um, and you have 10 districts. So if you want to have a district system, um, you can have 10 members. And if you want to have a ceremonial, ceremonial member, mayor who also serves on the body as your 11th member who then would be at large, I guess. Uh, you might be able to go somewhere there, but I'm just saying that you might be looking at it in two different ways, depending on the form of government. But I think if you're moving to town manager, your, your council would be a much smaller body.
But, but Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, many of those councils are for smaller population towns. So if you look at the representation per resident, our town, because of our size, might indicate a larger council size than the nine to 11 that you're, you're observing in many of the towns.
Well, West Hartford's larger than Fairfield and they have nine. Um, and they're very few, um, Meriden is, has 12. They're a little smaller than you by about, uh, 1,000 people. And Manchester is about 2,000 under you and they're at nine. Um, so population towns with the same population as Fairfield have smaller bodies. I think that the theory and the idea is you have a smaller board of directors. And some of them are at large, some of them are from districts. So, um, as you get smaller, Southington has nine. They're at 43,000, but the point is all the towns that have town manager forms of government in your population range are, um, very small numbers. 12, 12, 12 is the most, I think.
Yeah. The only thing I was going to add is my, my recollection from a conversation with Dr. Alberta is that, um, we could implement a town council of around 19 as a transitional step. I seem to recall the number 21 is, uh, but I don't know where that came from. But I do recall her saying we could, uh, I, and I know that may be large given Connecticut. But if we all agree that, uh, town council is in a more appropriate structure, there is a way to, um, you know, do that with significant, uh, representation.
So. Okay.
Yeah, you can, you can, look, you're not restricted to have nine. You could do 21. You could have 40 on a town council with a town manager. I'm just saying that that's not consistent with the model. Is, is all I'm saying. You can do it legally.
I think, um, until we kind of settle on this CEO versus town manager issue, you know, this conversation is probably a little premature. I mean, I, I, um, I personally, you know, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of kind of collateral material coming from the meetings on the strategic plan. And while I think that was very helpful, I must feel like, um, you know, we're a jury and we all haven't had the benefit of those meetings where people were very passionate. And maybe it was at the time where the town was facing horrible scandals or, you know, something else was going on. And that's why the cry for professionalism was happening. But I, I also am very cognizant of the fact that this has to pass both the board of selectmen and, and the town. I personally, from what I've heard, listening through all of these sessions, have not seen anything to lead me to the conclusion that a town manager, an unelected town manager is going to serve the needs of the town and that the culture of this town is going to be comfortable with a professional person being their kind of the, the person in charge of the day to day operations of what's going on. I, I personally believe that from what I've heard, seen from both here on these, um, these sessions that we've had and from individuals in the community, that they want the person that they voted for and that person who is accountable to them, a person they see in the grocery store, the dry cleaners at the restaurants. That's the person that they're going to, you know, either hire or fire in the Novembers that come. That, that that's who they're going to be happy with. I, I don't, I, I really feel strongly that it's, it's not something that we can get past in term, in either level of, um, the board of selectmen or the, or the town. Moreover, I don't see, you know, kind of the why here of how it, you know, the justification for why Fairfield would be better served by a town manager. I, I agree with John Matola that there probably could be some, you know, changes to the, the kind of the, the individuals, their job descriptions and how their, their terms or people who serve in the administration, but to kind of radically change it like this. I'm just not sure where that's coming from, um, based on what we've heard. And I don't think that it's something that, um, would, would be successful. Chris?
I have a technical question for Steve, which is the one I think I referenced before, which is, I think at one point you said, if you, if we were to switch from our current, current system to a, um, council town manager, that you really couldn't be done in one charter revision. And if that's correct, uh, or at least done in any logical way. Um, can you explain that and how would it be done then?
Yeah. And I don't want to state an opinion that, well, it is kind of an opinion of mine based on years of doing this kind of work.
Yeah.
Uh, the town management form of government is a very different form of government than the one you have. So let's, let's forget about the politics of it, which the chair just talked about in terms of the practicalities of, of getting it through the board of selectmen. Because it is substantially different, we have not done a real management study here. Um, moving to a modified version of the government that we have. And I believe that the mayor council is modified. Um, the unitary elected chief executive is a slightly modified version of what we have. Um, that gives, um, more clear executive authority to a mayor is not a huge uh, departure from where we are today, uh, with a modified structure of an RTM. I think that the concept of, and I've done this in other towns, I've gone through it in other towns, that the concept of going to a town manager form of government, which is a different culture. Um, a lot of those communities where town management works in the Midwest, um, in the Western states, including places like, um, um, California, um, are nonpartisan elections. We don't have nonpartisan elections in Connecticut, which is the, uh, I want to point out was the other point I was going to make tonight because we don't have an express grant of authority. And we don't have special authority to have a, a nonpartisan election. So it's a very, very big, big move. And one of the, so there's two approaches I've taken to it, Chris, over the years. One is to try to find a way to satisfy, and this goes to the point John Matola was making, to find a way to, uh, professionalize the upper executive, uh, echelon positions in the government, particularly if you give, um, more executive authority to a, a, a singular executive, not having a board of selectmen, but having a chief executive officer who has more significant authority is defining um, a chief operating officer. I've done that. Well, Hartford's done that. It's in the Hartford charter. I did that 20 years ago in the Hartford charter. Uh, in fact, I have a, uh, once I lock it in, I'll let you know, but I have a, a, a program with the Hamden Charter Commission on Tuesday, where I'm bringing two COOs, including the first COO in Hartford under their modified, where they move from city manager to mayor. We wanted to keep a professional level person in there. So I have the first COO um, in Hartford, uh, who's going to speak and a, a former CAO from New Haven, who's now the head of Public Works in Washington DC. Um, although if the trucks are going through Washington, he may be busy next Tuesday. But I will have, there is a seminar, uh, a seminar. I'm having a panel discussion at the Hamden Commission. And since I invited some people from there to join your meeting last week, I will make sure you get links to the Hamden meeting if you're interested in looking at that. So one of the approaches is that you professionalize provisions in the charter. You lay it out clearly in the charter. Um, just, uh, parenthetically, the issue of the full time person that, uh, Pam was talking about a few moments ago. You can make a full time requirement and you can have a provision for removal of executives, uh, if they're failing to comply with the charter. So that if they have a full time position, uh, and they're not working full time, uh, then they can be removed from their position if you have an adequate provision in your charter. So one is to try to accommodate the need for professionalism by inserting clear provisions in your charter. The second is if there is an inclination, there's, you know, there are several of you who feel strongly about this, is to mandate in the charter, uh, regardless of what you do. Let's say you take some, um, half measures or some full measures to even modify the form of government, but you want to clearly examine the town manager form of government, have a provision in the charter that requires over the course of the next two years, three years, five years, whatever it is, um, a thorough review of the city manager form of government um, for the town of Fairfield. Um, and put resources into it. Um, have, um, appropriate, um, professional guidance. Um, because one of the things we haven't, I, I happened to come across an article today, uh, because one of the people I've invited to my meeting next week, is a professional town manager. He was Province Towns Town, Town Manager, et cetera. And he took a job as he left the position in Province Town. And the article was talking about how hard it is to keep a town manager and that the average, um, tenure of a town manager, according to, um, records, uh, the head of the ICMA, which is the town management organization in Massachusetts and nationwide is six years. Um, and that you have to pay somebody in excess of $200,000. And Province Town was having a hard time keeping, um, people on board. I'm not saying that to argue against the issue. I'm saying that because we haven't looked at that. We, we don't know all of the ins and outs. And so one of the alternates that I would recommend is that you look at the possibility of mandating a study and then a charter commission. Uh, you can do what you want to do. If the four of you vote in favor of town management, you can do it legally. So that's not my point, that you can't do it legally. Is it responsible? Is the, is the issue that I'm raising. And so in our private conversations and our conversations, uh, uh, we, we've had that discussion. And my, my view is that there's two alternatives that you have that, um, address some of the issues. Uh, but if you really want to look at town management mandate in the charter, that, um, the issue of town manager be reviewed with a report date that has to be provided by such and such day. You can set up a commission if you want. Um, that would be appointed by the mayor and the RTM or however it's appointed, uh, that would have to report back to the government. Um, with the possibility of creation of a charter commission to, um, deal with the findings of that entity. But have the entity look specifically at the issue. And that's the way I would recommend it because I don't think we have the tools or the time to make final determinations.
And, um, just to point out, because Steve brought this to my attention, um, when we were talking the other day, is that the body that calls for charter revision is, um, the legislative body, what it was, can you explain why it was the board of selectmen at this point? And if we, if there was just a kind of a single CEO, that it would then be the RTM or the town?
Uh, un- under state law, if you have a board of selectmen form of government, it's the board of selectmen that makes the, um, choice and creates the charter commission. Uh, if you were to move toward a legislative, an RTM as a legislative body, regardless of what you call it. Um, if it's the legislative body, um, for, um, and there is no board of selectmen, they would make the choice about moving forward, um, with a future charter revision. So the, um, the charter provision would cert, if, if you move in that direction, the charter provision would have to be carefully crafted to make sure that they really mandate, um, um, a review by a charter commission after a study is completed. So there's ways to do it.
Right. But so that's just kind of in the sense of the balance of power that, you know, that it would be if we, if we were to go down the path of studying such a management style, that it would be, um, that it could possibly be the RTM that we call for the charter revision after that, those results too. So. But again, and I, and I heard that too, um, to your point, Steve, from those panels that, um, from Joe DeLonge and from others that there. from those panels that, from Joe DeLonge and from others, that there's a lot of turnover with town managers. It was difficult finding them. It's just a whole host of issues that, you know, political, logistical, and that that really are unsettling to me. But Pam?
Yeah, I if 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 the majority of the commission wants to go there, I I just want to be, I I feel very strongly, I don't even know that you could get this through the Board of Selectmen, to be honest with you. And if you did manage that, I just don't see it passing at the town level. But I think that Steve offers up a good idea. If this is something that should be explored. I think we ought to take the first step in making the RTM smaller, getting down to what would be more of a legislative council size functioning body that would work maybe eventually with the town manager, having the first select person and having something that, you know, let it let a commission study whether or not we should move to a town manager and do a full-on forum and feedback about whether or not that's where the town wants to go. I I think, you know, it says right on here, what's a realistic approach to government reform? We need to be realistic here. I I just, again, have not seen anybody come on any of these calls. I haven't gotten any feedback about moving to a town manager. What I consistently hear is the RTM is too big. We don't know what these people do. So I I just, I think that a better approach is to shrink what we have now, set the framework for it and go about and 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 have the provision to study for a town town manager. I am not opposed to that at all, you know, especially given the work the Strategic Planning Committee did.
Matola's next.
And I and 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 I do very strongly feel that we need to set the number for the RTM. That should not be flexible. I was on the commission that brought it down to 30. I can't begin to tell you how difficult that was. I I would not leave that number out there with flexibility. People don't want to get rid of themselves.
John Matola?
So, yeah, I I I agree with Pam. I I also think, I have just respect for all of you and I understand where all your, where we're coming from. I think that's the right direction to to go. And maybe we can ask Steve where you talked about implementing the professionalism in some of those upper echelon positions that there's municipalities that have some language that helps that maybe will help us get there. Maybe that's something we can look at. Because I do, I do think it's important to have that professionalism. I I I agree 100% with respect to that. So that, I I would like to go in that direction. And and I think the other thing too is, four of us say town council, three of us say they don't want to go in that direction. I, you know, I thought, and I still think it's very important that we be as unified as possible with respect to what direction we're going to go. There's not going to be any chance if we're not unified. And we're not unified, we're four of three. So just my my thoughts right now.
Yeah, I agree. Marlene?
Yes, I'd like to, I'm in favor of moving in the direction that Steve and Pam and John have discussed. I think maybe taking a look at the RTM and then sort of slowly looking at ways of the efficiency. And we we do have to be realistic about what we're looking at here and what we're going to be presenting to the Board of Selectmen. And I I don't know that we're ready to go in that town manager direction yet. But professionalism, competency, accountability, all of those things need to be addressed in the various different, from RTM, Board of Select, all of those things need to be addressed. And maybe we just need to take a small, small piece of it and then sort of work through the rest of it. Look at the whole big piece of it, have us have a study done like Steve suggested and and just really, you know, figure out what realistically we can do. But there are changes that do need to be made. It's it's apparent.
Okay, all right. John, Wayne, and then Jay?
So the points that Pam was making about achievability, I think are very important for us to look at and evaluate. I still struggle with the question of competence in management as far as the structure that we're talking about. I realize that John Matola's points are well-founded in that the managers in the individual functional silos that run the town, whether, you know, finance, HR, DPW, et cetera, being skilled and qualified and credentialed. If you introduce the chief operating officer structure that Steve was mentioning, you run the risk of the final ultimate decision maker. All those silos will make the right decision for those silos. The COO might make the right decision. But then the mayor is going to be making the ultimate decision. And the only requirement for the mayor, as articulated by the town manager we heard on the last panel session we had, they need to live in the town, be 18 years old, and get elected. And you could run the risk of subjecting yourself to a popularity, a popularly elected person that's not skilled and qualified. And that all your other managers are making counter, counter decisions for the underservant of the town in its entirety, where if you have the key decision-making role and the most knowledgeable, experienced, credentialed person, they're making the best townwide decision. And we run the risk of not achieving that with the structure we're talking about.
Yeah, I, so Jay was next. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I I just want to know, when's the next time we hear from the town? Isn't there a resident feedback session?
So, yeah, I
Before we make any final decisions, I'd really like to hear from the town.
I I think that's a good idea. And I was in favor of doing that kind of after the budget and the town governance panels that we had. And then it was suggested by the majority of the commission that we should have something to present to them and get their feedback. So that's kind of where we find ourselves today. So I do think it's paramount that we get more than less public input. And, you know, that is the next step after this. So
I think we have it scheduled for the next meeting, I believe.
It's for March 10. Yep.
So if we, you know, if we have something after tonight, I'd I'd hope that we would have somewhat of a framework. Perhaps we just have these questions that we're presenting to ourselves that are unanswered that we we hear from them on. But, you know, I think that to be kind of fair to the process and to Steve and to ourselves, we we do want to try and get some direction, start heading somewhere. So I mean, I think that this is a helpful discussion and hopefully the public is watching this and that, you know, they will be able to weigh in no matter where we kind of wind up tonight. But I, you know, and I and I thank everyone, you know, it's very, you know, helpful. You know, I never expected that we'd all be on the same page. I do hope that we get a little closer, but yeah. And someone, there's several hands here. John Matola, I think, was next, though. You're muted, though. And then Jay, I think Steve wants to weigh in too.
Oh, yeah. John, what I what I would say to you about your comments is that the remedy to that situation is the people vote the person out of office. That's, that's, that's how it works. And I mean, that's, that's democracy. And I, so I, I think that's the answer.
That's ten dollars later.
But it's like the governor, the senator, the congressman or the president, no, we don't, you know, I mean, it's, it's the people who decide, you know, it's, we could put a manager at every level of government. So I mean, that's, you know, kind of the the opposite, the flip side of that argument. Did Jay, do you have something to say again?
No, I was just trying to tell John Matola, he was on mute.
I think Steve had some, I think Steve did.
Yeah. Again, another technical point. I will send out to you tomorrow, because I had the same dilemma in the Hampden debates a year ago. There was a big movement toward town management. And there was a judgment made, and I'm not going to go into the judgments. I don't want to bias the approach that you guys are taking. But I drafted COO language for them based on a thorough review of professional positions, including town manager positions in the state of Connecticut. And that's the issue that's actually going to be before their commission again next Tuesday. And and so I'll send that language out to you to get a sense of what it would look like if you moved in the direction of a professional manager in a non, in a a unitary elected executive model, to give you a feel for how the qualifications be established. I don't try to create a, I'll take a look at it again. I don't think I did. I don't think I created a job description. I really think that's something for personnel. But some fundamental, basic standards and best practice standards that you have to look to for the national management associations for town management. There are, ICMA is the group that deals with town managers. So I'll send that language out to you tomorrow. And I will send a link, if anybody's interested, to the Hampden meeting on Tuesday so that you can, you can feel free to listen in at that meeting, as I have two, I think, pretty good speakers.
Chris, thank you, Steve.
Steve, while you're taking assignments. Is there, I think you said some towns did try, and I maybe I missed it. Did try and go this, this route of setting up a direction in that the Charter Revision Committee basically directed the town to start this management study that, and then have another Charter Review Commission in a couple of years. I don't want you to create language for that. But if you have something that, I'd be curious to see what it said and how it worked. But if if you don't have it, that's fine.
You know, I'm trying to think in my charters, have I created anything that was self-executing? I mean, I do, I have put language in charters. I don't know if you have it. The mandate's a charter commission every 10 years. So you can easily fashion something that would mandate a charter revision to take place. So it mandates a legislative body to do it in two years, in three years, but make sure that there's a study that takes place. I've also done it with, when I move things out of charters. For example, I'd like to thin the charters down and take the, take codifications out of charters and move them to the Code of Ordinances. So that we don't go for a period of time where there's nothing in the charter and nothing in the Code of Ordinances. I usually create a sunset provision where, once the council approves the ordinance, the charter provision goes away. So there's ways to do it.
But there's not one, what I hear you saying, there's not one specifically on this point of, of somebody who said, gee, we want to go from where we are to a town manager, now go do the following thing?
No, I I I've not drafted one, although I think it's a, I think it's an idea that could work. We've usually worked it out politically so that we haven't done that. But I have recommended it on many occasions, but they've worked out, the politics has worked it out so that we didn't have to put it into a charter.
Yeah, I understand whether that's acceptable or not is another huge question.
Got you.
So Jay, is your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. So if we are going to get the, you know, resident feedback in our next session, maybe we can agree on what it is we need to do tonight to make that session productive for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think, I think we need to get guidance is
I think you're right. I think, I, how did you, so you guys heard from thousands of people. So how do we get those thousands of people to this meeting? We've tried, but
No, I, believe me, that's why, that's why we had to go to them, right? We had the, we, so we took our show on the road, right?
Yeah.
We went to them, and that's the only way.
But just out of curiosity, though, so, I mean, I'm not, I I sincerely mean this. These thousands of people were all passionate and said to you, oh, my gosh, my life would be so much better if you could just get rid of the first selectman and have a town manager.
No, that's not true.
No, I would agree, I would agree with Pam and some other comments. You know, the average person, they they really don't know, right? They couldn't tell you the, what a first select person does or an RTM does. What they can tell you is that they felt that the town operations were confusing, Byzantine, and that, you know, all the corruption was something that was really top of mind at the time. So they, they, they didn't know what a town manager was. They also didn't know what an RTM person was. So all there was, all that was communicated was a passion and a desire to change what we have. So I don't want to overstate what we got out of that.
Many, many, many dozens of sessions. And we would hear in the sessions, this topic of efficiency of governance, RTM, town management inefficiencies come up in a multitude of different words in a variety of different meetings, to the extent that 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 collection of information formed a pattern and a direction for what the town was thinking. We had outside expert consultants involved with the process with national level experience. And they helped us discern what exactly the main issues were that was being articulated by our residents and how other towns and communities across the country have wrestled this to the ground and taken steps to to address it.
Okay, so John Matola?
So I I think kind of when we started this commission, we had some emails that went out and whatever from the first select woman's office. I I think we need to really publicize our discussion tonight and say we need some public input with respect to, we had a discussion where some of the members were interested in doing what I said. And likewise, some members were interested in going to a town manager, town council forum. We we need to get that out there so we get some feedback in the, over the next couple of weeks. And I don't know if Brian or Marlene, how we go about doing that. I I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Having the, having the first select woman send out, do an outreach from her office, that would be a great idea.
She does that.
To be, she does. She's been putting it in all the newsletters. And again, I think the timing of this is always tough. It was tough for us even during strategic planning because we're right in budget season now. So, and there's so much focus on the budget and so many meetings that are taking place. So it is, we we do have to, I agree, we have to figure out how to get more of the residents to to weigh in here. But it is, it is a difficult time right now.
Yeah. Well, I think they can send out emails, and I know she does. But I think her emails are very generic right now. I think if she sends an email out or a notification that we've had these detailed discussions about two paths, and we want to hear from the public, that hopefully we'll get more people to respond in the next couple of weeks. And maybe not, Jay, maybe no one will respond. And then I'm not quite sure what to do, but but I think, I think we got to try doing it.
Well, but that would be important to know, right? If so, if nobody, so either way, it would be a successful outreach, yeah. Okay.
But I I fear, I fear the feedback we might get will be guided by the exact reasons that we're trying to change some of these structures where people may not really understand they're going to vote to not change anything for, you know, fear of whatever and not recognize the full need for the beneficial objective that we've talked about.
I, John, I I completely agree with you. Not to interrupt you, but I I completely agree with you. It is incredibly hard to educate people about all of this. It's incredibly hard to get them to understand all of the conversations that have had here. And call me jaded, and maybe I've just been doing this too long. It is so hard to engage people at this level. I really, I think, is it premature just to ask the Board of Selectmen if they even want us to go in this direction? Because if they don't, Because if they don't, then we know, we already have our answer. I, I just think it's going to be really hard to, to engage at that level. And again, I, I hate to be a cynic, I, I, but I just really think that we need to consider what will actually ultimately pass. And if people aren't paying attention to this, how big of a seller are we going to have to make it if it's, if it's, I, I really do in leaning towards the idea of a study. I, I, I hear all the work that was done and the feedback that you got. I think it's worth exploring, but to meet a made deadline and be realistic about what we can actually accomplish, I, I just think it's better to get off of this and move that to something that should be studied and focus in on what we can get done. But maybe I'm wrong. Maybe, maybe I'm, I'm, I'm wrong.
I agree with you, Pam, on all that. And I do, you know, I guess what's unsettling also to me is that, you know, to, to be, I, I haven't heard or seen anything to come to this conclusion. And what I'm hearing is just that a lot of it was information gleaned from work that the Strategic Plan Committee did and information that they gathered now years ago. And so, and we're not hearing from the public today. And I, I just don't, and I, and I don't even know that those people are saying it's a town manager. I hear that they were upset with the town, the management of the town at the time. That was a different time. There was a lot going on. And, you know, there's, every level of government at one point faces, you know, challenges with individuals who were elected. And, you know, that's how democracy works it out. They're either, you know, removed from office by some type of impeachment or an election. And so that, that's happened. And so I'm, I'm not sure that this pressure to radically change town management is still there. But the RTM, the RTM does kind of, that follows through, right? The, you know, what you heard then, we're still hearing now. I, you know, and I can agree with that. And so that's where I'm coming from. And I believe that maybe we should, to your point, Pam, invite the Board of Selectmen before the public and say, here's where we are, you know, what do you think? And then we can have the public too. You know, I, I do feel that I would, I would like to be more unified, and I'm not sure how we get there.
Yeah, or, or the chair and the vice chair go to the Board of Selectmen and, and get their feedback. I'm fine with either one of those approaches.
Me too.
I'm good with that, too.
Yeah, and, and then.
I don't want to, I don't want to head down a path that we already know isn't going to be successful, so.
Right. So Brian, I don't know if you and Chris want to go to get on a Board of Selectmen agenda and get their feedback and come back to us or how you want to handle that. But I, I'd be perfectly, I'm, I'm fine with that.
If Chris agrees, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just want to refine a little bit what we're saying, the, I guess, really on a gross level, the two, two alternatives are, but yeah, then we can discuss it.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, maybe the three of us could talk, try to narrow it down. And then you guys can meet with them, and then we will hear from the public anyhow next week. But I would strongly recommend that after whatever public input we get, we should be ready to have a discussion and start moving in a direction because we're going to, we're really, I'm very concerned about, we may have to add a couple of meetings here. About catching all the work and, and getting the work done. So I would strongly recommend that hopefully we'll be ready at the next meeting to, this has been a, can I just say, may, Mr. Chairman, I think the discussion's been an outstanding discussion. And, and I'm really, really thrilled to be working with all of you. I think it's been a wonderful discussion. But I think we need to make a couple of judgments. And I think meeting with the selectmen is a great way to do it. But I strongly recommend, once we get the public component done next week, we, we really try to narrow it down so I can do some drafting for you. But those things are the COO stuff.
Great.
We have.
Marlene.
So I think we unilaterally agree, board finance probably could remain. We need a legislative function that is probably deemed to be more effective and streamlined to some degree. We would have a senior elected official in town, whatever we would call them. The full role of that individual in, in management would be clarified when we reach the conclusion on the chief operating officer versus the town manager, but I think there were the two kind of competing sorts of, of things. And the Board of Selectmen as a board most likely would go away into that refined RTM Legislative Council structure. Is that covered all the points?
Bring that up to them.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to let Chris be the one who's asked them if they want to.
I may be the one defending them, so.
Sorry, John.
No, no, quite, levity, levity is always good. I just wanted to make sure I had in my mind the, the main key points that we covered and I think agreed on or agreed to disagree on to infer or evaluate. And then obviously the point of how to go forward in studying the unwinding of that remaining issue, which sounds to me to be relatively narrow as far as what to do. But maybe, I, I don't want to speak for everyone, but is, did I articulate a reasonable summary of where we were or where we are?
I, I, I agree with that in general. Chris?
Yeah, at the end of the day, I'm not sure there's all that much disagreement on a very top level. And I think, because I think there's agreement that we can't just say we're going to go to a town manager, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have a charter and, you know, one year later, we have a town manager and that's it. Because it's just too complicated.
I, Chris, I agree.
I think that's where we're here. What I think the question is maybe that would they support us having a study? And I, if we're going to do this, there should be as much teeth in it as we can do, in my personal opinion. But are we going to put in there like you need to, you know, go ahead and have a study with the eye towards going to this and blah, blah, blah? Because it will, will cost some resources on the part of the town if it's done correctly and take commitment. The other issues that John mentioned, so then the other alternative is, well, not to do that, and then focus on our current structure. And what do we want to do within that structure? And, and things we could do would be get rid of the Board of Selectmen or, or really change its role, change the size and functioning a little bit of the RTM. There's a lot of things we can do. I'm not sure I want to put before them specific things yet in that bank. I think that's clearly within the wheelhouse they told us to look at. And I'm not sure, like, there's some things in there I may or may not agree with in the long run of what John said. But, you know, I'm not hard-fast on anything on that side of the house. So I, I guess I'm a little bit, if we go to them, we can tell them the things we've been talking about. And that's certainly one of the things we may do would be to get rid of the Board of Selectmen, would be to change the size of the RTM. We seem to have agreement on the Board of Finance, but we may want to look at membership numbers on that. Like, is that, I don't know where we are in this. That's my sense, sort of.
I, I, I agree with that. I, I mean, really what I, personally, all I want from the Board of Selectmen is for you two to go and say, are, would you be okay with us continue to explore town manager? And if they say no, then come back and say no, and we'll go back on our path. That's all I really want done there personally. That's all I want. One question. We've had it, we've had a rundown, we've had a whole conversation, but we're stuck on town manager. If that's something that the three of you aren't going to pass, then tell us right now so we can go back and move off of it.
But, and with that, I agree with Pam, but that doesn't mean that we don't have the authority or option to put that concept for further study in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I want to give deference to those of you who.
I agree, yeah. No, I agree, John.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I just think it's one question, and then we come back and if we decide to, you know, pursue a study, which I'm, I'm in favor of that, I have not, no problem exploring that further down the line, then, yeah.
The topic of, of doing a study on that may not be as daunting as you might imagine. Steve mentioned the ICMA, and I'm pretty sure they have resources that will come out to the town, educate whatever group wants to be educated on what the benefits ramifications approach to instituting that. So that may not be as daunting of a task if that's something that we codify as a next step.
So it's really a question of degree of, I guess, there's three things we could say. You could say, yeah, we're really interested in this town manager concept. And even though we can't do it right away, we're going to have a really strong push to do it, whatever it takes to get it done as soon as we can. Two is eh, not so sure, but idea of a study is good. We're willing to support that and see where it takes us. Or three is, don't bring up the word, we're not going to pass anything that says anything about a town manager. I think that's kind of the, that we're asking, right?
Sounds like the trifecta, Chris.
Be sure.
Now, that, I'm glad we've, we've, we've narrowed that. Now, as far as publicizing, we have two weeks to publicize our public comment. Mar, Marlene, you have your hand up, but I do want to throw it out there. I need help. We all need help. It's all hands on deck. I, we need to do this, you know, somehow, it sounds like this, you know, the, the John, Win, Jay, Marlene, you were successful in doing this. Help, how do we do this? Let's get this done and hear from these thousands of people. I mean, that's what I really, like, is the goal.
Brian, may I suggest that you.
Marlene had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Go ahead, go ahead, Pam. That's okay. Go ahead, Pam.
I, I was just going to say, have Brenda's office send something out, reach out to PTA Council, reach out to both town committees. You know, reach out to all the different organizations in town and ask them to send, write something up and ask them to send it to their membership and, and extrapolate it out that way. So I apologize. I didn't mean to.
No, so we've done that in the past, and we've gotten, you know, you've seen the, the public that's come. So, and all of that has been done. And, and in the beginning, there were specific, non-canned emails from Brenda's office talking about the undertaking of this commission. So it will be done again. I mean, she can do that, but there's something missing. I mean, the public, you know, they're not writing about it in the press. The public is not engaged in this. I don't know what will get them there. I do want to hear from these people and see if there's this huge undercurrent to go one way or the other. But I, I just don't know. We're at a real lack of how to do that. So, Marlene.
Outside of our first meeting, where I think we had close to 100 people, we obviously have not had that since. One of the successes of the Strategic Planning Committee reach out was to, or outreach was to actually hold these individual meetings, PTAs, things like that. As Jay said, we went to them. We do not have that luxury with this. That was a very different type of committee. And the timing was a lot different. So that's how we were able to get, I mean, every single PTA, just every single group, multiple tries. And to be honest, it, it was done mostly through, you know, the committee. It was not done through the RTM or anything like that. You know, no offense, Pam. I mean, actually Pam was very helpful in this process, but we didn't get a lot of support from the RTM. So we need, we, we had to reach out and we had to come up with other ways to do this. So, and that was very time-consuming, very lengthy process. We're not going to be able to have that here with this process. So I, I just wanted to put that out there to the, so that everybody in the public understands that the, the amount of time that that took is not something that we have the luxury for, for this. So we, we, we're going to, we're going to have to look at it with a, a different, it's not going to be the same kind of numbers. It's, it's just not.
Okay. Well, I mean, we're, we are open to all ideas. So, I mean, not just three of you, but, you know, Pam, Chris, John Matola, John, you have your hand up, so.
Do we have, we don't have a Facebook page, do we? I hope we don't.
Dedicated, not, not a dedicated group.
We do. I just, you know, and I just looked it up on Facebook. I'm sorry to interrupt. This is true. And I just put that in the chat.
We, we, we have a town Facebook page. We do not have a Charter Revision Facebook page. We had one for Strategic Planning. We don't have one for Charter Revision Commission.
I think if we write something up, and each of us then goes out to all of our social media networks, you know, I'm happy to be the town crier on Moms of Fairfield and, you know, everything else and see if we can get, you know, at least make some type of additional push to get it out there. There's no guarantee that anybody's going to respond, but we, you know, and, and I'm sure if we spook to the first select woman, she can do a special edition of her newsletter and, and get something out there.
So one other thing I wanted to bring up was the timing for this, which is March, March 10th. I, I think it's going to overlap with one of the budget, public, the Board of Finance, pub, public meetings. John, do I have that correct, John Matola?
Yeah, there, I think there's a, one of our meetings of this commission overlaps with the Board of Finance meeting, so.
But it's the public comment meeting.
The public comment meeting is a Saturday for the Board of Finance.
What did I see on there? Hold on, let me look it up.
It's a Saturday morning.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I think there's a conflict with one of the, like, when do we meet? The 10th?
March 10th.
I think you have a bu, I think you have a budget meeting that night, John. So maybe we should just start our meeting early that evening.
You know, you guys, I, I'm not going to mess your schedules up. You want to start this meeting a little early? That's great. I, I'm going to go to this meeting. I'll catch up on the budget meeting. I can watch those. I've done about five million of them over the year, so I'll be okay. And to me, they're both very important, but this is really important, so.
Yeah, and I wasn't actually just saying it for you, John Matola. I was also saying, because the public, there's, it's competing meetings on two very important topics. And the budget is very important to the town right now.
Yeah, I don't, I'll find out what's going to be on our agenda for that March meeting. Is it the first meeting of our Board of Finance budget, or is it one of the later meetings?
It's, it says Board of Finance Public Budget Session Number One.
All right, so, so, so then let's ask the question, because Marlene's point is whatever odds we have to get an audience, those, those odds just went down.
It went down big time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, so let's start our meeting earlier. Let's start our meeting earlier.
Would that help, or do we need to change the date?
I, I really have zero, I have, I have no, I have no dates I can move anything to. My preference would be just to make it earlier.
Okay.
Everything's online anyway.
Start at six o'clock?
That'd be great.
I, 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 I agree with six o'clock.
Okay. Anyone object to six o'clock? Yeah.
Well, why don't we do this? We'll talk. We'll have a special meeting for six o'clock because we already have a regular, keep a regular meeting for seven o'clock. So that, yeah, so that's what I would, I would suggest.
Special public comment meeting.
Can we do that? Because it says, it says public comment on the seven o'clock agenda.
We haven't put out the agenda. We just put the, we could change the. I mean, legally, technically.
Yeah, the time.
We can.
We're actually just extending the time for the regular meeting to start at an hour earlier. So I don't think we would really need to change anything except when the agenda is posted. We're not adding a meeting. It's just extending the time for the existing meeting.
Well, for freedom of information purposes, we need to have a special meeting. We can't modify a regular meeting. Those regular meetings are set at the beginning of the year. So we have to do a special meeting.
It's semantics. We'll get there.
I don't see, Jim's not on the line, but I think I'm right on that.
So we're in agreement that it's six?
Yeah.
Brian, do you want to? Should we take a vote on that, or?
I'm sure. I, I heard. Is there any objection to six o'clock on March 10th? For a special meeting and then go right into, for public comments, and then go right into a regular meeting? Seeing none, that's what we're going to do. Six o'clock on the 10th. And I will contact the First Selectmen's Office about sending the email out. I will contact the First Selectmen's Office about sending the email out. Um and then, you know, everyone, let's just kind of.
Getting on the agenda, getting on the Board of Selectmen agenda.
That Steve and Chris and I will talk about kind of narrowing, I think Chris pretty much boiled it down to those three questions that everyone seemed comfortable with. Um, and we can just kind of go over that and then get on the agenda for a Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't even know when they meet, but hopefully before the tenth.
The next Board of Selectmen meeting is
Another approach could you could consider would be to have, it makes a little bit more time for you two gentlemen to have an individual discussion with each of the three members of the Board of Selectmen so that they do not need to convene a a special Board of Selectmen meeting or we don't need to wait for their next regular meeting. That way you wouldn't violate the quorum requirement. You can still get the feedback that you're seeking and the direction that we need without waiting for that, you know, the other requirements.
That's an idea. What do you think of that, Chris?
Uh, it's whatever works, really. Um. Um, yeah, I don't know how hard it is to get on the agenda of the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, it doesn't seem, makes sense to call them to a special meeting, I suppose. Are they, they're still meeting virtually too, I assume.
Yeah.
They are.
Yeah, so it, you know, we set aside a couple whenever we, whenever we can do it. I think it's just a tool that's more flexible on timing and find a whatever, a half hour for each of them or something.
All right, so either way.
We use that approach several times with the Strategic Plan where we briefed and discussed topics with each of the members of the Board individually rather than completing a special meeting for that.
The next Board of uh Selectmen meeting is Mar- is um March twenty first.
Really?
Well, they have to vote on the bu- yeah, they have to vote on the budget. Maybe they could take fifteen minutes before or after. I'm sure if you spoke with the first select woman, she would work something out with you guys. I love that I'm doing all this speaking for her. She might wring my neck.
Okay, well, that this look like that's what's gonna happen, that we won't violate quorum and we will try and approach I guess each of them. All right, um. So now, do we have anything left on our agenda? Steve, did you want to talk about?
I kind of did. I I think I uh inserted into my dialogue before the nonpartisan elections are not possible in Fairfield because there's no general legislation.
Yeah, you've already covered.
Special legislation. I I I discussed that already. So I didn't think more to add. And I didn't put it in writing. If you'd like, in writing, I'd be happy to do that, but I didn't think it was necessary.
I'm fine with having it in writing. We can play back the the tape if we want to. Um, so the next steps we've um, we've already outlined. We're changing, we're adding in a new hour on the tenth for public comment. We are all redoubling our efforts to try and get the public there and hear from them about these um issues which will be boiled down um and circulated to um the Commission for Review um and presented, um, you know, somewhat informally at that public um comment. And um and Chris and I, um, perhaps with or without Steve, I'm not sure what makes sense to are going to meet with the Board of Selectmen members. Um, it appears as individually because there's not a meeting in the meantime, but we'll double check that to get a sense from them um as to where they are in um in a comfort level of um, you know, voting for a recommendation that would include one of the three following a hundred percent town manager, study a town manager, absolutely not a town manager. Paraphrasing. That it? Anything else to add? It's nine seventeen.
Early evening.
Any motions to adjourn out there?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, see you all. Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.